Good evening. We're going to get ready to begin. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Thursday, April twentieth, twenty thousand twenty-three. We are going to begin our committee reports with the Education Committee.
Hello. You have notes in front of you or should have notes in front of you? Education is relatively straightforward this month. As far as motions, you have two students with contracts for out-of-district placements, either the placement itself or E S Y. No relatives, we did check that. You have an agreement with Briar Cliff Swim Club for E S Y for the summer for those selected dates. You have an agreement with Pediatric Therapeutic Services. And you have an updated field trip list. The field trip list update right now is adding Dorney Park to the approved list. You will also see two out-of-state trips for approval. Both are seniors. Senior and junior trips. One is a water park out-of-state. What's the second one? Oh, there you go. Yes. So those will be separate items next week because they're out-of-state field trips. Also on motion, you have the, we talked about it last month but pulled it, the contract for Camelot, our program over at Collingdale. Mr. DiOrio's looked at it twice, so has Administration and Camelot themselves. It is a two-year contract for up to seventy-two kids. Right now, we've got about forty kids over there and we are renting that space. That's separate from the contract itself. That needs to be approved. If for some reason it isn't going to be approved, we will need to find new placements for the forty kids who are currently there, minus any senior who's graduating, but there aren't that many. So that is up for vote next week. Again, two-year contract with a possibility of one-year renewals after that. But right now, we're pushing for the two years to get that program settled over at Collingdale. The only other issue that didn't make it to the items to be discussed is the after-prom. There has been discussion about after-prom. We received a letter from Administration today on behalf of the parents requesting that the board have a motion for a donation. This has been done in the past. It used to be done by Ms. McGlynn, who was an assistant principal at the high school. Then after-prom kind of took a pause during COVID. Now there's a group who is trying to get it back again. We just need to know if the board does want it to at least be a motion and then obviously you would vote yes or no next week. But just a little bit of guidance of yes, you want to see it on the motion, as a motion, or no, somebody's going to call it from the floor next week, or no, we don't want it on at all. In the past, I believe it was five thousand dollars, but they, the letter is not asking for a specific amount right this second. It is just asking for assistance. But I believe it was five thousand dollars pre-COVID. It's almost always been in the gym at the high school. Eleven to three? Eleven to three. Eleven P M., three M., three A M., excuse me.
Right, okay.
So is everybody okay with putting it on as a motion and then you can vote it up or down next week?
Yes.
Okay. And that, unless there are questions, is all we have for education.
I have a question about Camelot schools. Can you give us your, your feedback recommendations regarding that?
Well, sure. So the overarching recommendation right now is that we need to have it. Again, if we do not have it for next school year, we need to find placements for those forty kids. In my estimation, about half of those kids would go back to their home schools and about half of those kids would need out-of-district placements, which come at an additional cost. And we have to get those schools to accept those kids. That will be very difficult going forward. What I would propose is that we make better use of the number of slots that we're paying for. Right now, that program houses a specific level of disability and type of disability. They do allow us to place kids there as what we call a diagnostic. Kids are waiting for their evaluations. But we know that it's never going to be completely filled because we have kids that move in, we need a place, we always need a little bit of a gap. But we could be utilizing that more than the forty kids that we're using now. But my absolute recommendation is that we need it. Not only do we need it for the kids who are currently there and who may be there, but if that program no longer existed, that building then becomes open and it is zoned for a school.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Very cute.
Next up, I don't see Mr. Butler. We're going to go to Human Resources and then we'll come back to Finances.
All right, good evening. Human Resources began on-
Sorry, I forgot to announce that while we were on spring break, it was Assistant Principals' Recognition Week. And so we did recognize them through CADNET and provide them with a gift bag. Part of that gift bag, they do have two certificates that they can pass in between now and July to miss either a Committee of the Whole or a Board meeting. So if you don't see them here, it was a gift of time, which is way more than what we gave them in the gift cards. The Principals' Recognition Week is May first. They will be getting the same gift, but their expiration date will be in August because they'll be getting it one month later. So they'll still ensure that we'll have an administrator here for some point. But if you see them missing, it's because we're trying to give them the gift of time back and we appreciate all that they do. And by the time we get to May, their day will have been over. So we want to go ahead and announce that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources began on page two of our board agenda this evening for Committee of the Whole. We have run resignation at Darby Township School. One of our supplemental teachers was actually able to secure a position in a certificated area. So he did move on from our district. So that is one resignation for the month for our professional staff. We have a resignation of two classified employees. One is a former employee that we did locate in the system as far as a substitute that was coming into our Transportation Department, but we hadn't been utilized this person in a while, so they will have to reapply. The other individual is a food prep and cashier. On page three, we were able to secure a school psychologist. That position has been open for some time. And we also have a long-term sub coming in for the Climate Manager at one of our buildings. We were able to secure a few security to add to our security team. We have an instructional aide beginning at Delcroft and we have one individual at our Darby Township School that will be transferring over to Knight Academy to provide services to our students there. We have two transfers within the district. One is going from a non-instructional to an instructional aide position. And we have a custodian that's going into our maintenance and plumbing position and our grounds and facilities. Number nine, we have an approval for the resolution of an employee. There is some documentation to go along with that. And then the next three deal with our Twenty-First Century and Extended School Year Summer Programming. And that concludes my report. So the position that this individual is going to do is seventy students, but this position is for the K to eight mentor. We are looking to fill the position for this year for Ms. Jackson. We're right on the cusp of our state tests. So we want to make sure that our students in her current location are testing in their environment with that individual. So yeah, there's a good chance that that may be held off unless we can secure a teacher for her replacement right after testing. But we have been working with her for some training days. K to eight. They do. She's there until the end of the month. Thank you.
Finances.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm presenting the next update for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process. Each of the board members should have a copy of it. This will be posted on the district website tomorrow. So the agenda tonight will just be an update or review of the budget expenses and the challenges. We have budget expense by object code, preliminary budget expenditures by function code, purchases, contracts, and other, and the twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget timeline, the remainder of what's going to happen, and then next report. So I put this slide back on again and I believe it was Mrs. Jenkins had a question. I believe her question was going to be, what is, what does the unfunded, the word unfunded mean in this, on this particular slide? And so I have on there Charter Schools and Special Education, P S R's, Transportation, Special Placements. So as, just to clarify, when I use the term unfunded, does not mean that those items are not being taken care of. The district is still obligated to fulfill and pay all charter school tuitions. We also must abide by and commit to the needs of special education children. And same thing with retirement costs and transportation costs for special placements. That unfunded mandate does not relieve us of our responsibility and commitment to what student needs are. This is just simply saying that we are not receiving enough money from the Department of Ed to cover all of our expenditures. And then when that occurs, then that, that part of the calculation falls into tax increases or budget reductions in order to commit to those obligations. So that's why I put that on there again. So the last meeting we had, I only reported out on the, starting with the third line, purchase service, purchase professional services down to other uses of fund balance. This time and last meeting, I said I would have a preliminary proposed budget completed for, that would include salary and benefits. So that's what you see in this, in this document here on this slide. So in total, the budget in total is going to be one hundred three million, two hundred forty thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars. You can see the differences in the increases. So employee salaries, this is, this is salary increases along with new positions. It's going up one million, one sixty. We have benefits that will be going up five hundred fifty-seven thousand that are also associated with those increases in salaries. Then we have purchase professional and technical services. These are, and there's another slide that will talk about some of the contractual obligations that were recently voted on. So they're in the budget. Purchase property services, there's a reduction. I put a simple number in there. That was the cost, a portion, a part of the cost of the H V A C project. This was a reduction from the ESRS funding, the ESRS A R P. So we had four point eight million dollars in that federal grant that we will not put the expenditure back in, nor will we put the revenue back in. Other purchase services also have, has to do with other contractual arrangements. For example, security and any other increase in those services that we will engage from outside sources. As usual, I try to keep the supply, the property and other objects and other uses of finances, or excuse me, of funds, stable and try to maintain what is, what it has been in years past. Those numbers may go down depending upon how I go through the line items and review them. I don't, with the one million, one sixty, part of those funds will come from the ESRS A R P funding and ESRS set aside. We have to spend those monies down, those dollar amounts down by September of twenty-four. So the, my intent is to get most of those money spent and allocated by June thirty of twenty-four. And that way, we're using those funds in the current, in the current budget, in, in this budget document. So there's that. This is just a pie chart of what it looks like. You can see employee benefits, excuse me, employee salaries and benefits take up most of the, of the budget. And this is just looking at the budget expenditures in total by function code. So you can see regular, it starts with regular instruction, special education, vocational technical, excuse me, vocational education, and the other categories are self-explanatory. And that continues on to the next slide. And you can see student activities and community services and then debt service. So just as another point of clarification, the debt service is the amount of money that we pay on an annual basis for money that has been borrowed in previous years, for example, the high school renovation and then other renovations that took place, capital improvements that took place in the district. And again, this is just another pie chart of what that looks like from a visual point of view. As I mentioned earlier, there were recent purchases and contracts that were awarded. And this is just, this was in the last presentation. This is just a repeat of that slide from the previous meeting. Let's see here. So the, the first category, the security equipment purchases, those are items that are coming out of the current year, out of the twenty-two, twenty-three year. These items were not budgeted, but were necessary. So this will have a potential impact on fund balance. Security contracts, again, the two-twenty for the four guards has come out of current. The four-forty-five is coming out of the twenty-three, twenty-four. And also the eight-fifty-eight is coming out of the twenty-three, twenty-four. There's a small portion of the, in this case, the Safe Corridors agreement that a portion of those funds, not a portion of the eight-fifty-eight, but there is another expenditure that will come out of the current year. And then we have the Assistant Principal, that's a contract over at the high school. And then the other is the, the course coverages, prep periods, and bonuses in the current year. And those items are estimated to be three million, ninety-seven thousand, thirty-six dollars. I just want to go back just, I'm sorry. Yeah, just want to go back to this real quick, or back to, before I get to that next slide. So keep in mind that during the course of the year, we have had vacancies that the district has not been able to fill. So those funds are, are funds that have not been spent. So those, those items that have not been spent will fall, in, fall out in fund balance at the end of the year. So the hope is, the plan is, and I'm pretty confident in saying that, is that some of those items that are listed there, that are in the current year, will certainly be covered by those positions that have not been filled. But also keep in mind, some of these expenditures are because of those positions not being filled. So there will be some fallout. I believe that it will not have an adverse effect on fund balance, meaning adverse, meaning that it will decrease. I had reported last month that the goal is to keep the fund balance moving upward so that we are able to do some refinancing and also borrow additional funds for renovations of some of our buildings in the, in the future. Are there any questions up until now? Sure.
Did you choose to, two different ones at a reduced price?
Yes, so, so, thank you, Mrs. Adney. So the thirty-four Motorola's, we already ordered those and we're going to keep, we're going to bring those in. And we have older radios that need to be replaced. So Mr. Rosnov is going to look over all that equipment and then we'll replace as necessary and then we'll have backups for those. But we will distribute the newer technology. As far as the additional radios for the Safe Corridors team, there is a radio that is less expensive and will only have a signal, a bandwidth signal, bandwidth? Dr. Lowry, okay, bandwidth, that channel, thank you, thank you. Channel that will only give them access to communicate with A P H S. These other radios go district-wide. Okay. Right, okay. You're welcome. This is just a, a timeline. So far, we've covered everything on this page. We did the object code three hundred through nine hundred last meeting. And as I had stated, we were going to present the salaries and benefits this meeting. Moving forward, the, I have on here, April twenty-seventh will be adopted, proposed final budget. This, and again, this is a proposed final budget. This is not the final budget and that's tentative. I may move that date to have it a special meeting before May eighteenth to adopt that. And then that has to be available to the public for a minimum of thirty days. The tricky part is I can't wait until the May meeting because between May twenty-fifth and June twenty-second is not a full thirty days. So I may, most likely I will have a special board meeting before the May eighteenth Committee of the Whole. Financial reports and projection discussion will be up next. General fund budget expenditure categories, that'll be all, all categories will be discussed. And general fund adoption of proposed final. And there's just one other thing before I get off of this. I thought I put it in one of my slides and I did not. So where it stands right now is that, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed that. I wanted to put the revenue on here as well. So right now, total revenue, total revenue is approximately two point nine, two point nine million dollars short of the expenditures. So the expenditures right now exceed revenue by two point nine million dollars. So at this point, I have, as far as revenue from the Department of Ed, I have it the same amount that we're going to receive in the current fiscal year. There is a, an estimate that is available that I am not using because it's just an estimate at this time and there hasn't been any movement in Harrisburg to confirm that we're going to get that amount of money. But it would come close to the amount of money, somewhere close to the amount of money that we're short. Now, that, that will work out. I know that in the past, when they give us estimates, they come kind of close, but not close enough. So there has also been discussion and conversation about a no-tax increase. So what I have in this document is taxes are flat at this point. I did modify the number to align itself with the new assessments or any increased assessments. So it did take in that number and bring it up to current, did increase taxable revenue approximately four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, somewhere thereabouts, over last year with the same assessed value, the same mileage. So right now, I do not have a tax increase in any of these numbers. So if the Department of Ed money comes into where they're estimating it to be, then the, the challenge of that goes away. But, but understand that move, that's not, that's not a promised amount for ensuing years. So next year, they could take it back. Okay, so, and then, so the, the reason why I'm saying that is that the risk with that is, is that if we don't prepare for that and we walk out, we roll out and we don't have some small tax increase, then the tax increase will be larger in the ensuing year. And quite honestly, in my experience, when you have consistent or manageable tax increases versus not having a tax increase and then in the ensuing year, you have to make up for what you didn't do the year before, that discussion and conversation is much more difficult than if you were to just gently increase taxes if that's the case. But the goal is always to minimize any financial impact on taxes. That is always the goal. And that's, when we go over each, each line item and there are thousands of them, that is the purpose of knowing that, so that we know what we're looking at. That's why you see that some of the line items in supplies, other expenditures are flat because we're not looking to increase, we're just, just because. That seems to be a, a thing that people do. In this case, we're, we don't do that. We haven't done that for, over the last four years.
So you're saying if we need to do a tax increase, it would be the same, the same increase as current?
So over the last couple of years, we've done a three point nine. One was a three point zero. Then the last two years, we did three point nine. The index told us that we could do five point one percent. I think the year before that, it was four point three. This year, I think it's six point two. They said that we can increase taxes, which we're not going to do that because that, that's, we're just not going to do that. So we should be mindful and responsible enough to know that we can't wait an entire year and then say, oh, folks, by the way, we should have did something a little bit last year, but now we see that the impact is going to be greater next year. And I'm, I'm telling you, that conversation, that's a difficult conversation. So anyway, it's something to think about. If it's, if we get what we're supposed to get from Department of Ed, then the conversation is, is really reduced to, to nothing. And, and then it doesn't become an issue next year. So it's just something we have to just keep in mind as we get closer to voting on. So it's just something we have to just keep in mind as we get closer to voting on the budget. That concludes my report.
So last night, we had our parent student advisory committee meeting, combination of Zoom and in person in the Darby Township Library. There were about a dozen people at Darby Township and maybe about two dozen on Zoom. We covered topics such as Act 158, the pathway to graduation. Ms. Burke from the kindergarten center did a presentation on transitioning from kindergarten to first grade. We had our school announcements, our local community announcements, and then we had the remainder of the time as an open discussion about how to move that committee forward and just about how we meet and where and when and some ideas about that. The next meeting will be in the summer. We are still determining that, but that's about it unless, Ms. Perry, I missed something.
No.
That's it. Then there were a lot of people here today that were here last night. Policy, you should have a policy packet in front of you. The March policies, if you remember, were all financial. We had to raise some limits on bidding and quotes because the state had raised limits on bidding and quotes. There are no second readings this month. There are four first readings and they all have to do with the same thing, which is students who are homeschooled. So you have all the packets, I'm sorry, all the policies in your packet. 137 has to deal with parents signing the affidavit for who they are claiming to homeschool and it gives the district, in extreme cases, the ability to deny a parent who has shown that they have not been able to homeschool to keep doing so. There's an appeal process for that. We've never had to use it, but it is, if the policy passes, in there just as a safeguard in case somebody says they're homeschooling but really doesn't follow through with that. That's 137. 137.1, homeschool kids are allowed to participate in extracurriculars. So if a kid is being homeschooled and wants to play football or be in, you know, the yearbook, they are allowed to do that. And that policy helps determine their eligibility and that they have to meet requirements to keep doing it like our kids do. 137.2 is the same thing. It's about eligibility for home education kids, but it's about co-curricular activities mainly for us would be about band. So obviously, I'm homeschooling my child. I can't have a one-man band in my house. I get the opportunity to take advantage of the band in our schools, but I also can't send my kid to Academy Park all day because now they're not homeschooled. Now they're a full-time Academy Park student. So it does give them the right to participate in co-curricular activities, but it limits that right to a quarter of the school day so that they're still qualifying as a homeschool kid, but still have access to something that they may not have access to as a home education student. And then the last one, 137.3, is new to us, but it's the same thing, homeschool kids being eligible for VOTEC. Just like if they were ours, they'd be eligible for VOTEC and have to follow through with applying and being accepted, homeschool kids can, can do the same thing. So all four policies will be first readings, but they all essentially have to do with the same kids, the same idea, which is the rights of home education kids, homeschool kids. Any question on those? Okay. The last thing is the gift that keeps on giving, discipline guidelines. They are the last three pages in your packet. We did try to meet as a subcommittee over email, but we sort of got sidetracked with some other projects. So really, the big question right now that came from prior discussions is, one, a reminder that this is a draft and that it is not policy, it is guidance. So it doesn't need to be voted on, it just needs your input. But the big thing that was sort of debated by a couple of board members the last time is the small infractions and whether small infractions should lead to exclusion from school after whatever numbers of, of infractions. I know there were at least one or two people that were not in favor of that and then a couple of other people that said, maybe we should talk about that. So it's really just a discussion now or a chance for input now if, how the board members feel about repeated smaller infractions like failure to follow directions, class disruptions. The major stuff seemingly, in my opinion, everybody was on the same page about. It was that small infraction piece where there was a little bit of back and forth and we wanted to go to the subcommittee and bring it back. Now we're back.
So the subcommittee hasn't met, so there haven't been any changes in these guidelines?
There's been no changes. It's the exact same thing that was presented a month ago. We had tried to do dates and then we had talked about policy, but we're not really talking about policy yet because we had already reviewed those. We're back to the, do we try to get the subcommittee back together or do we just, let's all, let's get it over with and do it while we're standing here kind of thing? Because this has been revisited over and over again and we're going to run out of time if we're making changes and need to input, or I'm sorry, implement this for the start of next school year. So my intention for this was to put it out on the floor, take whatever notes anybody wants to give and then come up with what will be a final draft to then work with administration for implementation. So to me, I would say a final draft needs to be done by June so they can start getting it in the school handbooks. Now, could we stretch that to mid-July?
No.
Yeah, but then we're starting to cause other problems. But if you're asking me, it needs to be done by June for handbooks.
So I, I think I did make it clear that I'm, I'm really not comfortable with a suspension at a second minor infraction, especially if that minor infraction includes things like forgetting their school ID or being late to school. And then my concern about this is regardless of how we move forward, in my opinion, as a parent, it seems to be more enforcement and staffing that's an issue at the high school. So if we're struggling with what the current rules we have, what can be put into place so that they're able to enforce even more guidelines? I mean, I'm not saying no changes need to happen, but at the same time, I don't want to bog down administration if they don't have the tools they need to be able to handle, the tools and the staff they need to be able to handle this.
Sure, we can turn this into a, we can turn this into a survey and report back. Yep. I, I don't think I'll have a problem getting answers from them for this.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I should have, I really love what Mrs. Washington just shared. I do agree that we should maybe survey some staff of some admins and get their opinions. But then I'm wondering, when we do come up with a final draft, is it possible to make it available for the public to see before we're like, yeah, go ahead and do this? Because I mean, I do think parents' opinions are valuable as well.
I mean, there's nothing stopping you from surveying the parents. It doesn't need to be reviewed like first reading or second reading because we're steering clear of the, the policy discussion. And you have to advertise it anyway, but Bob, to my understanding, there's nothing stopping us from getting community input, correct?
That sounds great and all, but can we get some input from the students? So like the leaders in the building? So I know they have like student council and stuff. Honor society, regular schmuggler, old students like myself.
Yeah.
And then some of those heavy hitters. Maybe they have some input in this.
I'm wondering if, for the discipline committee, if you guys are opposed to removing the suspension from second infraction? I'm not either. Mrs. Washington?
I'm not opposed at all, but I really, I'm hesitant to move forward at all without your input. I really don't. I feel like we're in the bleachers, but I want their input.
So I can make it a note until we get survey results back so that it's not lost, but we're still getting what was requested.
That'd be great. In terms of timeline, two weeks or so or do you, you think you need more time?
Can I have a day to think about this?
Okay.
So my, my, my suggestion is there is state testing about to happen next week. So that's like a two-week, three-week, maybe a four-week process. So we're in June already. So again, if, the board could have had a retreat, an executive session to discuss this stuff prior to tonight's meeting. So again, I'm going to suggest that the board do their due diligence and actually... But on a second note, I would like a copy of the handbook, please.
I have it.
You do it, thank you. So again, if we're waiting for administration, that means we're waiting until June. But then they got to pack up all the books. They got to mail them off. So again, we're in the middle of June, right? About the May-ish, the end of May-ish.
I think we can get it done before June.
But we don't want to put constraints on administrators, like they don't have nothing else to do.
I would agree with that statement.
I don't want to put it on the...
But I would also say, not speaking for them, this will be important enough for them to find time to get it.
I understand that, but at the same time, we have been doing this for how many months?
Couple.
A couple of months again. So again, we're forcing administrations to stop what they need to do so that the board can get some information when the board members could have just walked inside a building and saw for themselves what goes on. No, I didn't, I didn't say forcing, I said...
You said forcing administration.
That, that would be forcing them if they have other things to do. They better, they better can do their jobs now because they're too busy handling discipline. So I mean, we have barely a staff. My bad. I, I just don't feel as though, in my opinion, that we should be taxing staff when, as a board member, you can go see for yourself and then have some ideas and not wait until the end of May to get the survey or force administration to do a survey and then they're back on further in their work. PSSA is up.
Well, we appreciate the, the staff who are going to give their input regarding the survey.
I worked on the survey.
Right, since the, the board members have requested it.
Okay.
We don't want them to not think that we took time to ask them their suggestions and recommendations.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Anything else for policy?
Next up, property.
Good evening, everyone. This, this evening, there is no voting items in the property committee, but I have several items that I just would like to update the board. Mr. Baxter touched on some of our personnel changes. We recently had one of our custodians promoted to the, to our plumber position. He's hitting the ground running, familiar with the buildings and we're really excited to have him take on this role, Mr. Martinez. So he's going to do great, already working with them to, you know, get them onboarded as quickly as possible. We are also already started interviewing potential replacements. We've had some great candidates come in, so hopefully, you know, working with HR, that will be concluded hopefully by the end of this week and maybe we have that position filled very soon. I'm also requesting and working with HR and the business office to reinstitute our maintenance C mechanic position. We currently have one of our maintenance personnel out on personal matters or items and we're not really anticipating if he'll be back. So this could be a buffer. Some of the work orders that are mounting for that particular position, be very helpful to have someone on staff now and through the summer to really knock out a lot of the requests. So you will see that. April 12th, I believe that was the half-day or report card conferences. We held our annual environmental facility meeting, onboarding a lot of our new employees with several on the grounds committee and one newer custodian. So we discuss, you know, environmental concerns in the buildings, write to know for MSDS sheets, safety and some other matters. One of the items that we did discuss is our flushing program here and that's the packets I passed out. So we are not actively testing for lead water. The last two summers, we installed close to 30 filtered water fountains and bottle fillers throughout the district. So that was a big help upgrading, you know, our, our water fountains coming out of COVID. We also plan to continue that to make some replacements and repairs to some other fountains that we didn't get to yet. But Academy Park has a large amount of them, so we will be changing a few more out there and the few that are left in the other schools will be doing our work to make sure that they're working correctly. So with the flushing memo that you guys have, our custodians are on board to go around and, you know, flush some of those other spaces. We're not really anticipating people trying to get water from a hand wash sink, but the spaces like nurses' office or teachers' lounge, areas like that. I already talked to food service and they, a lot of their devices are, are already on like a filtration system, so pretty confident that we're making our needs. I will follow up with our environmental consultant just to make sure that we're doing everything we can to have the safe, safe drinking water in our schools. And that is also to be compliant with Act 39 of the school board code as well. So just wanted to inform anyone or if anyone had any questions regarding that. We have two big repairs going on at the moment, or one was completed last week. There was a, a staff bathroom at Academy Park that we switched over to give the staff more, you know, safety and security as they can use the restrooms. It was an old-style lock that doesn't fit the needs of our school anymore, so that finally was repaired. Some, several components of those locks were on back order, so it took a little bit of time. And if you notice, maybe crane outside or those big generators we have out back of Academy Park, several components of them are aging, so we were able to work with a new vendor to make repairs and it was a big ticket, big ticket item for when I got here, so I'm glad we're making headway and making the repairs. And some additional pairs may be needed that were on top of and we're going to make sure it gets taken care of. And finally, we also had a, I guess a plumbing issue at, at the kindergarten center a few weeks ago. Weren't really sure what was going on. We had some electrical issues underground that it seemed like some of the trash trucks or heavy-duty trucks were causing an electrical issue underground. So we were able to revert those lines above and across to where our pumping station is. So that's a temporary repair, but we will reevaluate if that's what we're going to keep going forward. So we'll, we'll keep looking, you know, a, a look at that. That concludes my report. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Next up, safety.
Good evening. I'll be as quick as possible so that my cohort in the back here can, can leave in an acceptable amount of time. I would like to yield my, the rest of my time at the end of my presentation to maybe one or two of them later on. Anyway, I'll just keep going. So, all right. So I have a few topics. Review of ongoing projects, camera system update. Over spring break, we installed cameras in the auditorium and the gymnasium. Exterior cameras are also being updated at the high school outside of the gym. Those are older cameras, they're like 400, 480p. They all give us a very good shot at the, the park or the parking lot, so we're going to be updating those as well. Sharon Hill's going to be getting some updated cameras in the next couple of weeks, but because of testing, that's going to be done after hours because of drilling that has to be done into the building. Staffing-wise, we hired one security officer for APHS and I'm still currently holding interviews for the remaining two positions at the high school. Cardinal Point, all their officers are in... Cardinal Point, um, all their officers are in place except for one, and that final officer will be placed on Monday. So we'll be at full staff security wise by next Monday. That's all I have. Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Um, were there any questions regarding Safe Corridors?
That is going to be now, it's been changed to a board decision. It's been um, asked to put it on the agenda for Thursday, um, for a new vote.
New vote of what?
A, a vote of termination or not of the contract.
Termination for what cause?
So that would be a board member discussion, the administration.
So I can ask that question. Termination of what cause?
Breach of contract.
Breach of contract, when?
March first.
March first, because we didn't do.
Well, they showed up to the building prepared and ready to work without their clearances on the twentieth. Right, on March twentieth. So originally, they were supposed to um, begin March first. And we extended their time to March twentieth, to my understanding. And on March twentieth, they pre, they came prepared and ready to work. I believe there were nineteen staff members. And, and we did meet with them and have a conver, you know, had a conversation with them. Prepared, ready to work before the sun came up, we believe it was six thirty five AM. And um, our human resources director did not have their clearances. And when they uh, came into the building to work, they were aware that none of them, the district had zero uh, clearances from Safe Corridors in terms of the employees that they hired. So we want to have a um, a board discussion about um, whether they think, whether the board believes that we should continue with them. Um, it was mentioned earlier when we had a, a meeting with uh, the board regarding precedent in terms of other contracts as we move forward.
But that's not true.
Excuse me. Wait, hold on.
Point of information. So, question. We approved their contract on February twenty third, twenty twenty-three. We expected them to have employees ready in three weeks?
No, we're, we're talking about the, the, based on the contract.
Well, it's based on the con, but so what I'm asking, you, you gave me some dates. So the board approved their contract, the board approved their contract on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and the board expected them to have three weeks to hire their employees.
It was stated that he, he was ready. The statement he made that he was ready.
Okay, um, and then him being ready, you're telling me that he didn't send over the proper, not, I'm not saying he, the organization did not send over the proper documentation before March twenty-first?
Is that correct? Can we bring um, Mr. Baxter to the podium? Is that correct, Mr. Butler? I'll be.
They sent, um, I can have it, don't worry.
Hold on, we'll get the information for everybody.
They sent the um, information on March nineteenth at nine fifty-nine. On that Sunday night, and they were supposed to start that Monday. But then when Mr., when Mr. Baxter um, checked it, none of them, no one had all their clearances.
But my question is, why did anyone say anything at that time? Why is it now that we are uh, sitting back and looking at the uh, uh, situation where Safe Corridors didn't do their job? Now, as they were looking for extra uh, for their employees, no one on this board stated that um, it should be, uh, the contract should be terminated. But we gave them extra time. Okay, extra time between now we were discussing that the time was too long? Well, good luck in court.
Are there any other comments, feedback, suggestions? Before we move on.
I just need some more information. So the request right now for the board from administration is the termination of the contract?
We did not make any requests.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I'm, I'm just asking questions. So administration did not. So who is asking for the termination, the board members?
No, what we said is the board should discuss it.
That, that's, that's, no. That is not what I said.
Oh, you didn't say that?
Right, so that we would discuss in an executive session.
Okay, so let me check, excuse me, let me re.
Point of order, uh, point of information, ma'am, I'm trying to get my information together. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So I'm going to reword my question. So administration informed the board that it was a breach of contract? Actually, Mr. DiOrio. Oh, okay, so, hold on, Mr. Butler has something to say.
Mr. Butler, I'm asking, uh, because the board, they, they said it was a board decision. Like the board information.
No, I said we should discuss it.
I'm sorry, they say it was a board discussion.
That they want to have a board discussion.
Oh, they want to have a board discussion about breach of contract?
Yeah.
So who gave you the information about the breach? What, excuse me, let me ask this question. What individual, human being gave them, gave, set, no, what individual human said it was a breach of contract?
Somebody had to say.
So was, was it? The administration's saying they didn't say anything, so what board member? Let me ask, Mr. DiOrio. Let's, let's put this up right there. Did, did, did you?
There we go.
Mr. DiOrio, did you inform any board member that the Safe Corridors contract was a breach of contract?
I discussed this in executive session, so I'm not going to reiterate what I discussed with the board as far as legal matters in an executive session. But what I would say in the public is that the contract indicate, the contract that was signed by both sides, by the, by the board and by uh, Safe Corridors indicates the start date is March the first. Twenty folks ready to work March the first with proper clearances. That was extended, as you know, by the board until March the twentieth. Those are the facts that are clear as far as contractually between Safe Corridors and the contract. Whether or not the board wants to determine, based on those facts, that they feel there was a breach of the good faith effort to con, to, to comply with the contract, that's going to be a board discussion. I've given some information in executive session as to the legal, possible legal ramifications and process involving that.
Okay, yes, I was not present at the executive uh, session. Um, so at this point, I guess I'm asking the board members, which board member believes that it's a breach of contract?
Actually, um, to my recollection, we had a meeting, I want to say, last month.
I'm talking about the meeting that y'all had today that I was not present on.
Right, hold on, let me, let me finish in, in regards uh, to breach of, on the subject, regarding breach of contract. Um, we had a discussion, um, I think, a few board.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm freezing too.
A few board members were on Zoom, actually. Um, I want to say, was that last month or the month before, actually? Yes, and Mr. DiOrio was very clear to um, notify the board that there was a breach of contract. No, we were in, we were in this room and, and some of the board members were on.
I believe what essentially I said at that time was the contract, I, I reiterated the terms of the contract. The contract said March the first, that was extended by the board by agreement of both parties until March the twentieth. On March the twentieth, there weren't twenty folks available to come to work, so that's what I said.
Correct, Mr. DiOrio. So is that, is that considered a breach of contract if both parties agreed to a different date?
Well, I think it's, the facts, the facts are that what was promised in the contract did not occur as of March the twentieth. I think that's clear. I mean, that's just a fact, that's not an opinion.
Yeah, but when, when we discussed it, it, it was discussed that even if they had, they uh, uh, eight or twelve people to start, that we agreed that, that we were going to allow them to have.
No, 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 no. See, you're getting confused, the executive session upstairs and the violation in the email. That's what you're getting confused.
Say something, Mr. Butler, before we move on to the next thing.
Well, I guess in my opinion of, or my take on this, is that the topic of breach of contract is just a discussion uh, or a possible discussion. It wasn't that um, anyone was saying that there should be. It was presented that there should just be a discussion about that, which is, I mean, for me is, it's something that you have to consider when you're having contractual conversations. So it doesn't, it doesn't surprise me that someone would, that a group or individual or whoever would say, uh, there's, you know, should we uh, talk about specific things in the contract? And if you vet them and the conclusion is, is that no, there isn't, it, at least you had the opportunity to talk about it as a group. That's, that's my spin on.
Yeah, but my thing is, why now talk about it when they already told us that they have the people to start on Monday?
Okay, so here, so here, so here's, here's the challenge.
Let me, can I see this on real quick, Mr. Butler?
So the every.
The board wants to discuss whether or not they, it's going to be a breach of contract. I mean, this is crazy, because like I said earlier, when they were working for getting these people cleared, you continue on working with them.
I have a question.
The employees of HR kept working with them to make sure that these employees were uh, were clear.
I have a question, can we, it's possible we could discuss, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Are we able to discuss what was, how the meeting was, the meeting that prior, this meeting, are we able to start that year? Because I, I feel like are we missing information? Like you guys had a meeting prior to this, and I would like to be able to discuss.
Mr. DiOrio?
Well, essentially, um, Ms. Washington, what was discussed is just what was presented here. It appears now in, in information that we just received this evening from Safe Corridors, is that I believe as of, uh, according to Mr. Baxter, as of today, they have sixteen folks that are ready to work as of Monday, uh, and possibly more because I believe Mr. Baxter said he's, he still is reviewing some additional applicants, qualifications. Is that, is that true?
Yes, four to five more acts.
So there, so there may be, there may be some additional folks from, from those four or five that do qualify to bring the, the number greater than sixteen. That's what it is, and the conversation essentially was, well, is that a breach of contract or not? And I guess the determination would be whether or not uh, the court would ultimately determine if it was ever presented to a court, whether or not there was a good faith effort on the part of Safe Corridors to uh, to comply with the terms of the contract, whether or not there were things beyond their control. There's all sorts of, all sorts of factors, but I mean, the, the fact is that as of March the twentieth, there were not twenty folks qualified to begin, which is what the contract said with the extension given to March the twentieth by the board and agreed to by them. So what the board decides to do or not would really depend upon what the board as a majority decides. And based upon that then, if it went to a judge ultimately for determination, it would be up to the judge to determine whether or not there was a material, what they call a material breach of contract. So it's, it's a, it's a legal determination by a court. It's not something that the board, the board makes a determination. The board would just decide whether or not to terminate the contract based upon the facts presented.
No, my, my only point was going to be that when you're looking at contracts, one has to expect, or I know from my point of view, I have to expect that there are going to be questions about uh, whether the organization, one is acting in good faith, whether the, uh, in this case, the district is acting in good faith. And I believe that we have, as a district, acted in good faith uh, for a multitude of, uh, on many different levels. Uh, but I will say to you that if uh, I'm not saying Mr. Curry's name because to put him out there, but just because he has a huge project uh, that's going on right now outside the HVAC, uh, but I can use that as well. So you have a uh, a, a, a project that has to do with the generators over at the high school that has been an issue with this district, he didn't mention this since twenty twelve. And they have not been in good standing since that time. So we have that project going on, right? So for that project to start, and then the contractors say to Mr. Curry, oh, by the way, I can't get a sub or I can't fulfill uh, this contract with the necessary staff we're going to deposit, is completely unacceptable. And we would ask, well, most of our bid documents have penalties built into it. If you don't do the job, you're paying us money back. And then you get kicked off the job and, and we, it, it gets handled that way. In this case, that wasn't the way this contract was written. It was more casual. The contracts that we have that Mr. Curry will put forth, and it's just not Mr. Curry, other departments do it as well, are very specific, that if you don't fulfill specific details in your contract, there's a penalty. Uh, and there is no flexibility. Uh, and we, it's not a give and take. It's, that's what the words say, and that's the, what, what we're going to stick to. So um, I think, again, going back to the breach of contract, it's a, it's a conversation that, for me, it doesn't surprise me that someone would ask that because uh, there were many different dates that this organization was supposed to start. It didn't happen, and we were gracious enough to uh, continue to work with them in good faith. But it, the, the conversation doesn't surprise me that it would come up as, is this a viable option? Should we or should we not? But I think it's just a conversation.
But I, I think with the board, don't you think that it's important for, for them to be in the high school? Because they are needed there?
But that's a different, um, not to interrupt, that's a different, that's a different topic. The, 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 sure, it's a different topic.
I think the importance of them being there has, that is the great sweeping effect. Because we realize that it's important.
Correct.
So I think those deadlines and timelines are stretched because we know that it's important. That's what I see, that's what I see.
So if we know there is important, if it is important, so what is the conversation about uh, uh, termination?
So, so, and, and let me put a, a different stamp on this.
Can I have a que, can I ask a question real quick, Mr. Butler? So the meeting y'all had this evening was with Safe Corridors, correct?
Yes.
And they left thinking what?
They're going to work Monday. That they would start on Monday with the sixteen. Um, and Mr. Baxter will continue to look at the four to five.
Okay, and then, secondly, um, good faith, um, in my opinion, and from constituents in the community. Not saying that administration was the ones, but it was told throughout the constituents that the administration did not want Safe Corridors, and this is why we're at this point where we're at with them not being high school. I'm, I'm not saying it was y'all, I'm just saying what the people and, and the public says. Now, I think that a lot of the, the people that I saw there were from the community, right? And we don't want them to say that we just say yes because we say yes, because they had already heard that the administration, not the board members, the administration didn't want them. And basically, the board members forced them onto the district, right? So when we talk about breach of contract, when this is out in the public in such a way, it really looks crazy. It really looks crazy, you, you know what I mean? Like, and that's why I said, what I said last time, well, administration didn't want them anyway, because that's what was out there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm done, you, you know what I'm saying, like, so.
I understand what you're saying.
I, and I said this at the last time we had this meeting. Matter of fact, I was on Zoom and I had no voice. That's, that's what I was, when I said it. Because I had heard it months before then, and I brought it, left it, and it is what it is. So that's why I'm like. So that's why I'm like, now we want to do a termination?
That's the discussion. I think the board voted, the majority voted, yeah.
What is the election year? So I'm a vote, if I, if I'm, yeah, I mean, it's election year, May is next month.
So.
So I, I'm gonna want, I'm a parent, so I'm, if I'm a parent out there, y'all better be saying yes, because you want me to, you want me to vote for you, right?
Can I just?
Now, what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, if I, if I'm a parent at Academy Park and it's voting season, you better be saying yes, because if not, then I'm gonna spread your name all through the district so you don't get revoted. So that's what I'm saying is, as a parent, you understand? As a parent, as a high school, so.
The parents want them there.
No, I understand it's a contractual discussion, and that's why I said.
If, if we had a meeting with them earlier and they are expecting to work on Monday, so all of a sudden that we need a discussion about it?
I don't think anything is all of a sudden. I think we've been talking about their timeline.
Butler, and then we're gonna move on to the next.
So.
Okay, and then after you, we'll move to the next.
So this, I've mentioned it a number of times in some of my meetings or some of my presentations as to how this, I'm not too sure how it got convoluted out in the community. But if you go back and look at all the recordings, I've said a number of times that this was a board initiative. And the initiative eventually became the responsibility of this administration. And so we took that on. So we didn't take the position that we were going to somehow create an environment where this was not going to be successful. And I can confirm that because, looking at the contract, there were financial obligations which have been fulfilled, given the fact that the starting date wasn't what the starting date was. So I'm not too sure how that conversation got out there, but I'm hoping that this clears it up, that administration took on a responsibility. Because the, the things that needed to be fulfilled, the board certainly couldn't take, couldn't, didn't have the capacity to do it, nor was it their responsibility to ensure the work, the hard work that Mr. Baxter is doing with these clearances and those kinds of things. So, yeah, I, I.
No, no, I, 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 I know that. And that's what I iterated to the individuals that brought it to my attention, that it wasn't an administration issue, it was a board issue, because they didn't do their due diligence before the board decided to throw it on the laps of administration. So let me be clear, I, I'm only speaking about myself, made sure of that. And again, I don't want the, the error of the board members to keep continuously falling on administration's lap, right? I don't want you guys to keep getting beat up, keep getting, whatever, because the board members aren't doing their due diligence. So that's why I keep saying, that's why I keep asking the question, the, did the administration, did the board? I want to make sure I'm completely, it's, it's a defined line, that it wasn't administration. Some of this fell on the board members not doing their due diligence and researching the organization as they should have before even coming to administration to ask them to do the final steps, if that makes sense.
Right, but.
You understand that makes sense?
Yes, Ms. Monroe, what's that? We, we can't, as administrators, our job is to make stuff happen, right? So we, we can't spend our valuable, busy time on wondering whether or not this thing is supposed to work or not work. We have to get it to work so we can move on and do the rest of the hard work and make sure things are stable in the district.
But I think, I'm sorry, one second. But had the board did their due diligence, right, and research went out, went to other schools to see, talked to other buildings that they are employed in, then I think that it would have been a more responsible vote on the board members. And when we came for discussion months and months, and we won't be back and forth and back and forth and back and forthing, and then by the time it got to the administration, it would have been an easier and smoother transition, if that makes sense.
Well, they would be working today had they had their clearances. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be here at the table having the conversation.
But, okay, so let me say this, so, because I'm, I'm, I'm I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be very, very nice right now.
No, so Mr., I just want to say, so Mr. Baxter, I want to, I mean, if I could stand up and give him a round of applause for his due diligence, right?
So I wish the board would have did their due diligence as well.
We did when we voted to approve the contract. That's the board's job to, to vote.
People voted and didn't even know what the organization was doing, because every meeting, you had more and more questions. So again, if you had did your due diligence in 2022, then we wouldn't be having this discussion right now.
So, we're gonna move forward.
And so again,
Did you have, did you have?
If the board did their due diligence in 2022, we wouldn't be here in April 2023.
So you're blaming the board because Safe Corridors didn't have their clearances? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm blaming the board because it's lackadaisical, you don't do your research.
We acted in good faith, as a district. We acted in good faith.
I'm talking about board members. I'm talking about the board members. If you didn't have questions, and when you had the questions, you could have brought the organization in and not waited until February, and then expect somebody to hire somebody in three weeks when Southeast, when the district can't even get employees in three weeks, you expect another organization to do the same thing. So again, if the board had did their due diligence, you could have asked all those questions in December, January, February. And when you vote at the end, people still had questions. There's no okay, it's on tape. What, what are we talking about here?
Would, would everyone?
And that's what that is.
Do you, do you have something to say before? I, because I, I'd really need to make a stab at wrapping this thing up.
So I have, I have two questions. One is for the administration, and then one is for our solicitor. So at Academy Park specifically, not just teachers, how many staff members are we down? How many bodies are missing from that building that we're expecting people to clone and duplicate themselves and handle this building? Because, I mean, just teachers alone, the HR report says 22. And then we have security, there's all these bodies we're down. And I think, I feel like our staff has already come to a past meeting and expressed that how great just that first day was. So that's my question for administration, is how many bodies are we down in Academy Park? And then for the solicitor, he brought up a material breach of contract. And from what I can see online, a material breach of contract would mean that the contract is irreparably broken and defeats the purpose of entering into the contract in the first place. So in my opinion, I'm not an attorney or a judge, in my opinion, it is not irreparably broken. And we still are trying to fulfill the purpose of putting more safety, security, and people in Academy Park. So could you define material breach of contract?
Mr. Diorio, I, I, I think, I think you just defined, you just read what it, what it meant.
But this is just Google, I'm not, he's unclear.
So, but I, really, this needs to be wrapped up. This is, this was supposed, I, I assume it was supposed to just be a discussion. And no one has, it can be a healthy, constructive conversation. No one has said, oh my God, this contract has got the end because of these reasons.
The president put in an email.
And she asked to vote on it.
And she has to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Period. She put in an email. She said, let's terminate the.
Let me finish.
I was asked the question and I responded to a question.
Listen to me. There has been, there, there, there have been, this, this, this whole venture, take the, the company name out of it, has been so fast-tracked and coming from so many different angles. I, from a business point of view, I understand the confusion that could exist and has, that has been created. We all know that this moved at a faster pass, pace than anyone could grab their hands on. You go back and you look at the meetings, and even for administration, this thing was moving fast, and we were hopping from decisions that we did not make. But now here we are talking about this thing, and it all supposed to be, it was only supposed to be another discussion because it moved so fast that folks didn't have an opportunity to even think about some of the things that they're thinking about now. Period. No, no, it, okay. You know, listen, listen, I'm going to wrap it up. I'm gonna wrap it up. I'm going to wrap it up. Listen, I can give, I can give a lot of examples, but I'm gonna wrap it up.
Oh, no, no, I'm going to give an example.
But we don't have to.
But the whole thing is this, Mr. Butler, I, I totally agree with you.
I, excuse me, Mr. Fowler, thank you. I agree with you. I agree with you. I'm talking about all the questions, the fast pace. It was, y'all were like jackrabbits. If the board had did their due diligence in October, you could have been formulating questions. Listen, Mr. Butler, you could have formulated questions, October special meeting, October special meeting, November special meeting, Dec, how many special meetings did we have in 2023? 1,075. I'm exaggerating. Then January comes up, no questions. Then the vote comes up. They, the board could have had many discussions. We could have had executive sessions. We could have had retreats. We could have been talking about this for months. So what I'm saying is, I want the constituents to know, it had nothing to do with the administration. They did what the board asked them or what the board told them to do. The board did not do their due diligence. And you wouldn't have been jumping around like jackrabbits when you have other things to be working on. I agree with you, but at some point, people have to take accountability. Just like I take accountability when I come at people's necks, and I mean what I say. I even put it in writing, and I mean what I say. You have to be accountable. You were voted in by constituents. You were voted in to do a job. You don't get paid for it. But guess what? Someone's been on here more than two terms. Someone's been on here for two terms. Some came to meetings, some didn't come to meetings. Some were involved, some weren't involved. It is not the responsibility of the admin to food, spoon us, feed us like babies. We are all adults. We all work. Every person on the board. Well, you retired. Due diligence, accountability. If we expect accountability from y'all, we need to have accountability of ourselves.
All I'm going to say, that this, this should be on the next board, a topic on the next board retreat, because there are.
I'm gonna ask you this question. When the board retreat?
I'm just saying.
It's gonna be, we, we, we waiting. We still waiting again. So that retreat is not gonna happen until after the election, because we can't even get together to even do.
Ms. Monroe, what's that? I'm gonna stop talking, so we can, we can end this conversation.
We have one card tonight, Mrs. Barley.
Before she starts, so we're putting this on the agenda to terminate the contract? Or we gonna put it back on next week? So we gonna discuss it again in the next meeting?
At, at, not, executive session, at, at the executive session, after, after, after this meeting.
Executive session? I'm going home. I'm going home. I won't be doing our executive session tonight.
Board members, board members, there is something that we have to discuss for five minutes? With nothing to do with Safe Corridors, but with the betterment of our district?
Does it? Does it have to do with Safe Corridors?
No. Not what I have to speak to you about, and it's essential.
And you're going first, correct?
And I'm going first.
Okay, that's all that matters. Thank you.
Hi, Francesca Barley, 418 Lafayette. I've been calling Dale. Oh, all right, Francesca, everybody knows me and my address. Calling Dale, right. So I just, not to beat a dead horse, but I would like to talk about Safe Corridors and how excited from a parent's standpoint that I was on the morning that they had showed up. And I completely understand what you're saying about the clearances. But from what I'm information gathering, like Ms. Monroe, Dr. Winder, you had said that after the meeting, you had said they're gonna start on Monday. So if they're gonna start on Monday with the 16 they have, why on Thursday would it be up for a breach of contract termination?
So that's, that's sorry.
No, I'm not gonna let you go down the road.
Okay.
Okay? Because I don't have enough.
Sweetie's pie. No, she asked me, when did we say in the meeting they were gonna start, and that is what we said. After that meeting, Mr. Diorio had a meeting with the board members, and that was changed. So their governance is what, she just asked me what was said in the meeting, and I responded. And then I didn't know that this was gonna take place, and then that took place.
So then I have a question for the board members.
I'm just taking notes.
Thank you, Dr. Winder. I have a question for the board members. Who or whom brought up the topic of breach of contract?
I did, and we, we're moving on.
President, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So anyway,
Thank you.
Let me just get back to what I was saying. So we have the 16 people. The contract was for 20 people. I'm not sure why we're fighting over the four people. If it's taking money away from them, then could, could that, I'm not sure about how that works, but could something be done, like a, you know, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but take some money, so we could start with the 16? And then if the contract is null and void, for, I'm just looking forward for next, towards next year, what is the board's alternative to put in their place? So that's, that's just where I'm going with this. I mean, if there's something else that can be put into place that's, you know, proven, but I'm, as a parent, I was extremely happy to see them there. I would be extremely happy to have them in the building. I think it's a matter of safety. I think it's a matter of actually staff morale as well. The staff was really happy for it as well. So that's all I want to say. If we don't have this, and it is, if you guys are moving forward and that does happen, can we discuss another alternative? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there another card? Because I have a question about what she just asked. Yeah, y'all, y'all, y'all should, I just have a question. Sure and quick. So board members, what is your alternative if you decide it's a breach of contract for next year? Did y'all discuss that executive session as well? Excuse me, I'm, a point of order, I'm asking a question.
It wasn't discussed.
It wasn't discussed, so the board has no, no other options, no other suggestion or anything? Okay, great. Thank you.
May I, may I just say something? I just want to make, make it clear, Ms. Whit, since you weren't present. What, what was discussed in executive session was simply possible legal ramifications of a reconsideration of the contract. That's all that was discussed. There wasn't any discussion as far as what board members wanted to do or not to do, or alternatives to that. That should be discussed in the public. It was just my information to the board, legal information that I gave to the board concerning possibilities that I heard, that I suspected might be coming up in the future. I just thought I should instruct the board as to what possible legal ramifications would be involved. That's all this, and I'm not just saying that for you. I want the, I want the public to understand that this, the terms of this contract and the circumstances of the contract, that was not discussed with the board. There was no conversation in that respect. It was merely me providing legal information.
Thank you, Mr. Diorio. So the, Ms., Ms. Abney, since you brought up the breach of contract, do you have any ideas or suggestions?
We're moving on.
Whoa, no. So Ms. Abney says, excuse me, no, no, nope, nope, we going there?
That's where we going. That's where we going.
We're closing.
That's where we.
I move to adjourn the meeting. All right, it's been moved to second. The motion is on the floor.
Did you have anything?
Oh, no.
The motion is on the floor. The motion's on the floor. You have to address, you have to address the motion. It's been seconded. You have to address the motion. Thank you.
Are there any others who would like?
There's a second on the floor, so it has to be voted on.
And that's why I'm asking.
It's all in favor. Roberts rules of order.
Were there, were, were there any others?
It was seconded by Rebecca Perry.
Hold on, hold on. Are there any other opposed to adjourning the meeting?
What is a motion in the second? Roberts rules of order.
Hold on, calm down.
It's supposed to go motion, second, is there any further discussion? There's no further discussion, then you call for the vote. That is the parliamentary procedure.
Thank you, thank you for that.
You have a 501(c)(3). You have a five oh one C three. Don't, don't do it.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Don't do it.
Yeah, you're out of order.
No, you're out of order.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry. Right. Right, that's, that's what I, that's what I was asking. Right. Calm down.
Can we, can we?
Right. Come on.
She says she doesn't have anything further. Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Oh, not for, not for everyone?
No.
Okay. All right.
Are there any opposed to, um, finishing the moting? Is everybody in favor of closing the meeting?
Aye.
Right, are there any opposed? Okay. Thank you guys for being here. Have a great night. Thank you all. Have a great night.